What's that?
The thing he's opposed to.
It should be there, it's on mine.
I don't know if that's ever been a policy, I know that, and I'm talking to Brett, that the council has approved.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. We'll begin this evening's agenda with a roll call by Fran Donaldson.
You got it. Councilmembers Lorette, Fitzgerald, Nat Fick, Shahadi, Bynum, Phillips, Spread, five present and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you Fran. Would you all stand please and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would Officers Frye and Patel please join me at the podium? Begin this evening's festivities, ladies and gentlemen, by swearing in of two brand-new police officers. Would you gentlemen please repeat after me, using your own names, when I call for your name, and raise your right hand. Good job. Aye.
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 Minnie Patel.
Randy Frye.
Very good. Do solemnly swear that we will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Iowa.
That we will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Iowa.
And that we will faithfully and impartially, to the best of our ability, discharge all the duties of police officer in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
Discharge the duties of police officers in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Very good. Come around here please and I need you to sign. Please folks, let's show our appreciation. Please introduce yourself to all of our council members.
Congratulations. Welcome, congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mayor, I believe Officer Patel has a speech he'd like to give.
It's gonna be real short, huh?
I just want to say thank you very much.
Well, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, this is a special event for myself, as well as many of the citizens in Muscatine and our city staffers. Fran, would you come forward, please? Mayor O'Brien, would you please come to the podium?
Oh, I like it.
We have a presentation that we would like to make to former mayor, but he's always gonna be Mayor O'Brien to me, Mayor Richard O'Brien. Fran, I will let you do the honors.
When Mayor Hopkins asked me if I would be willing to do this, I said absolutely. I've known Mayor O'Brien for a really long time, and in fact have adopted him as my family. So it is more than an honor for me to give this to you.
Fran, thank you so very much. That is outstanding whoever thought such a thing. Well, it's same on both sides, obviously, isn't it? That is really nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I am glad to have become a member of your family a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
I'm gonna take this back from you now.
You wanna take this back? Okay, please do.
We're not done, we're not done, Mayor.
Did she get a picture?
Randy, could you come to the podium, please?
Dick, this was also new to me, but I've had the pleasure and the honor of being a friend of yours for a long time. We've served in Toastmasters together, city council, you were the mayor, the longest-serving mayor for the city of Muscatine. You have done wonderful things for this community, you've been a great leader, you have made us a better community the whole time. That riverfront is about you and everything that you've done. This O'Brien Parkway was actually Steve Boca's brainstorm, he thought what a great way to name, change Harbor Drive and name an O'Brien Parkway as a recognition of everything that you've done for the city, and especially down on the riverfront. So, Dick, it's an honor to see your name up there every time you go down to the riverfront.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, ma'am. That is just great. I'm glad you did it. You manufactured that whole sign there.
Yes, I did.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. You can certainly have the microphone. I would agree with that, though, by saying, this mayor has never passed up an opportunity to speak over a microphone.
If there's a microphone, please call me, I wanna be there. Do you need any more time here? Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Hopkins. City Manager Greg Monsoyer. Members of, said I wouldn't do that. Members of the city council, past and present. My very special friends. Part of this city government. My special friends Randy Hill, Steve Boca, Fran Donaldson. Stephanie, obviously, is not here. Stephanie Raminoli, just wonderful friends of mine, served a long time together. There's a gentleman who is not here. That is a very important part of this city government, Mr. Bill Trent. My dear friend Evelyn Shalton. Stand up, yeah. You won't stand up. I didn't, you know, I didn't expect you to, but I thought I would ask you.
If you don't mind, if you all don't mind, just remember, a ninety-three-year-old lady couldn't get up.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks to all the members of the city council, past and present. It has been a great thrill for me to be a part of the city council, as well as certainly to be your mayor. I would not be standing here tonight if it were not for these people, all of these people. But there's one other group of people that I would still like to read their names one more time. The Riverfront Renovation Committee, put together a long time ago now, but that committee consisted of Mr. Jeff Fick. He was the chairperson of that Riverfront Committee. Tireless worker, he did an outstanding job. Mr. Jay McKee, another citizen member of that group, and Mr. Van Bell, who at that time was at Monsanto, did a great job. Larry Wolf was here, he was a member, along with Steve Boca, was a member of that committee. Bill Trent, at near the end of that council, or the end of that Riverfront Drive, Bill Trent was back, he was a tireless worker again, helping to gather the funds that were necessary to build and to complete this riverfront. So, I guess that I've given you about all the names that are necessary for tonight, but it's still hard for me to believe that this skinny kid, who grew up on the south side of Muscatine, could ever become the mayor of this city, let alone become a member of the city council. Sixteen years, that was a long time ago. This is an incredible, incredible, that's a new word, I'm going to do that, and I wanna, this young lady just walked in, and I wanna mention her name because she is one of the group that I consider very special friends, Stephanie Raminoli. Stand up, babe. Nice that you could be with us. I am truly honored to have been a part of this city's government for all of these years. If I have your name, if I have left out your name, please forgive me, because there are so many people who are involved, and I don't wanna forget anyone. And I want you to realize that this, I read these names, these very few names, but all of you, all of you, we have some young people back here, who are probably not available during the renovation of the riverfront and the work that took place down there, but the citizens of Muscatine are the people who got this job done, and let us renovate that riverfront. Many, many other things that we can talk about, the swimming pool, we can talk about the skate park, but a lot of things were happening, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm proud of all of you, the citizens of Muscatine. So thank you, it's most appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor O'Brien.
You deserve it. I fibbed. I fibbed.
What happened?
That's yours to keep.
Really?
I must put it on the wall for that.
Put it up out in the front.
Bidwell just got changed.
And don't put it there, it changes the street.
Moving right along, ladies and gentlemen, if there is anyone in the audience tonight that has an issue that they would like to go to council's attention, this would be the time to do that. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Very good, we'll move on. Item five is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? Bob, and I need a second.
Second.
Second, Tom.
So is the discussion, is the request for issuance of burn permit going to be part of the consent agenda, or is it going to be pulled for further discussion?
That's up to council, if you'd like to proceed, or if you'd like to pull it for additional discussion.
I'd like to pull it and hold it for further discussion, separate action.
Motion on the floor, second?
A second, Ben.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, moving right along, item?
You'll need to take action on the consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
The item that was pulled from the consent agenda.
We just passed pulling the item.
Oh, that's correct, that's correct. Well, there it is, item C, right?
Right.
Okay, you wanna discuss that right now?
Yes.
Presented for city council's consideration is a request from Chad McDaniel and Eric Wagner for the issuance of a burn permit. Both of their individual lots, eight ninety-five and eight ninety-seven Newell Avenue, combined equal almost an acre. A large majority, or eighty percent, of the lots is wooded, and due to the 2010 tornado, there are large masses of fallen trees. The purpose of the request is to allow Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Wagner the opportunity to burn deadfall at their convenience. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
Now, I'm really confused, because councilmember Bynum and councilmember Spread moved to approve the consent agenda, so I was assuming that you guys already made the motion, you and Jeanette, to table it, or to pull it.
For separate action from the consent agenda.
Okay, alright.
And I don't, and the mayor had us vote on that, and I'm not sure whether we need to vote on that, or just part of the consent agenda, you just say, I want this one held, and it's held.
That's correct, you just need one, one individual can pull it from the ground.
So did our vote, did we approve the consent agenda with the items pulled?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And we'll revert back to additional discussion on the consent agenda, if it's needed. But right now, is, I need a motion to approve.
For it dies for a lack of emotion.
Right, so is there a motion?
To, just now, to approve the burn permit?
Yes, I'll read the verbiage again. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from Chad McDaniel and Eric Wagner for the issuance of a burn permit. Both of their individual lots, which combined is almost an acre. A large majority, or eighty percent, of the lots is wooded, and due to a 2010 tornado, there are large masses of fallen trees. The purpose of the request is to allow Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Wagner, the opportunity to burn deadfall at their convenience. And again, the question is, is there a motion to approve?
Is there a discussion first?
No, legally, technically, no.
A motion is required before you can have a discussion, and then you can either vote the motion up or down, subsequent to that discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
And I'll second it, so we can at least discuss it.
Okay, now discussion, council.
I would, how does the fire department fit into this request?
Go ahead, we've got, one, just step to the podium, please. Acting Chief Abbott here with us tonight. I believe the ordinance is for one acre, is that correct? And these two individuals are landowners, did not have an acre, and the council has historically, or has historically, has on occasion granted to adjacent property owners a burn permit of this nature.
Yep. According to chapter two of the open burning Title VI regulations, there will be no open burning without, within the corporate city limits without the permit having been issued by representative of the fire department or by special exception of city council.
So has, how many burn permits have been requested over the last several years?
I honestly don't know. I know it has been, they have been granted through city council in the past.
And that's part of the issue here is, and we have somebody that wants to speak to this against having a burn, allowing the burn permit. City of Muscatine has changed their ordinance to include acreages and so forth, and now in special requests, because we eliminated open burning, to eliminate the smoke and so forth. Since the, what is it, the PM two point five?
I think there's a cost associated with over an acre, is there not? Cost for the permit?
Yes, for an open burning permit, number one, you have to have an acre or more, and that is a twenty-five dollar charge.
But because of the air quality issues that we have in the city of Muscatine, the city of Muscatine quit burning at the compost site, and have, they have been grinding for several years now, to eliminate the necessity to burn, and it's been the will, or the, I would say, the will of the past councils, that we don't allow for open burning. We haven't approved burning permits in the last several years. Whether we do or not is up to this council, but I would like to think that we would help with air quality and not allow the burn. I think there's other ways to eliminate tree, dead trees and so forth, than just piling them up in a corner and burning them inside the city limits.
There are two areas that we do burn, and one is the golf course. We do burn the natural grasses out of the golf course, and then two, at Mark Twain overlook, we're required to burn, and you've seen that one recently, and that's per our contract with the state. I don't believe there's any other areas that we're currently burning.
But the one next to the bridge is actually state-owned.
State property, yes.
State-owned property. So there are exceptions to the rule, but they've been grasses that we burn. I just don't think they need to be burning massive amounts of trees.
Your Honor, I do have one question. Has the people around that one acre been notified that they're yes or no, are they in favor of a burn, or are they not in favor of the sacredage being burned?
I was just looking at the email, I don't know. I don't know that they have been notified.
They don't have to be, yeah. Not required.
Mr. McDaniel, who's made the request, has contacted me after he visited with the fire department, just about the procedures, and I confirmed with Chief Evers, and he said Brian would be here tonight, regarding just what the procedures were, I shared that with Mr. McDaniel. I don't know if he's in the audience or not, I suggested that he show up tonight. And that is where it stands. Whether or not he's visited with any of his neighbors, I do not know, I don't know if he has close neighbors or not. I know that earlier, right before the meeting, there was a gentleman that would like to at least visit with Mr. McDaniel about this. I got his name, his phone number, I'll share that with Mr. McDaniel, they can talk about it if they would like, I don't know if he's a neighbor or not. And from what I understand, you're basically tabling this or pulling it off, or wanna come back at some other time. Regarding, I know, Phil, that there is an area where people, as far as leaves, are concerned, like four neighbors go together, the properties are contiguous, makes up over an acre, causes too difficult for the leaves to get out. I think it's under Leroy or under Barry, I'm not sure. And the city council has allowed them to burn in the past, although I don't remember the last time that that happened.
I was gonna say, I don't think the last, well, 'cause I've, I mean, that was routine, every year it was the same thing, and I don't think they've had a burn request for the last several years.
No, I don't recall it either. So, and that's what I know, and Brad, you're out here, come forward, and if you're on, home watching this on TV, you'd be able to answer some questions in the future.
Randy, in your opinion, what are the viable options to burn?
It's gonna be too expensive for them to get it up to the road, to get it to the compost site. I think that's the big cost, and so they can just let it lie. And it is a wooded area, and based on the pictures that they took and shared with council, you know, it looks to me like, you know, that is an option. I believe that their main concern, mayor, is to, what it's gonna cost them to get it up to the road, just even have the city help them get it down the compost site.
Is it possible that it would be of fireplace quality?
I have not been there, I don't know what it is. I just don't know.
Your Honor, there is something else we should consider, and there is an inherent risk in doing nothing. That lumber's been laying there for a couple of years, it's drying out, it's gonna be tinder. You can have a lightning strike, and then you have an uncontrolled burn. So do nothing is not necessarily an answer either.
Your Honor, with the smoke and the pollution that we currently have in Muscatine, I'm pretty strongly in favor of not having a burn permit.
Your Honor, if you'd like more information, or if you would like the individual to contact his neighbors, the council can require that before any action would be taken, we could table it, and request that they do that, and that they attend the meeting at that time, or obviously you could take action tonight to deny the request, or to accept, or grant the request.
Well, it's my opinion that we need more information before we move forward.
One of the things I'd like to know is the source of water. Does he have any source of water hose that he could run back there in case it got out of control or something?
In order for us to grant a permit, he would have to have something.
Source of water.
Some sort of ability to put the fire out.
Okay.
So it would have to be a controlled burn, that's one of the problems you get if you start burning large logs, why, then you lose that ability, so, but, yeah, he'd have to have something.
Okay.
Can we pull the item? For the discussion?
At council's pleasure.
It's okay with me, Your Honor, I'm inclined, if I had to vote tonight, to probably deny it, because just since I view it as an exception, but I'm okay with finding out more information.
I would be willing to get additional information, but right now, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not interested in having open burning in Muscatine, minimize it as much as we can.
You've expressed yourself already, Mom and Jeanette.
I'd like to have more information.
Tom?
More information.
Okay, we'll pull it from the consent agenda.
Should we simply table it and tell the next meeting?
I'll move to table it until the next meeting. Second.
Second, Tom, okay? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
We're voting on tabling.
I don't wanna table, I'd like to get it off the agenda.
Okay.
Go, should be, should not be a burn permit in Muscatine.
We had four As then, one A.
Yes. Okay, back to the consent agenda and discussion. Other items under consent agenda.
I think we had a vote to accept the consent agenda.
We've already voted to accept the consent agenda.
Right by me, didn't it? Alright, let's move along to public hearing, okay? Item seven, A. This public hearing concerns the proposed project identified as rehabilitate airfield pavements at the municipal airport. The project will involve the repair of joint seal damage, corner spalling, joint spalling, holes, linear cracking, durability cracking, scaling, and failed patching. Repair techniques will include joint cleaning and sealing, crack routing and sealing, partial depth PC concrete patching, and full depth PC patching. The engineer's estimate for this project is $121,000. If approved, the project will receive ninety percent federal funding with a ten percent local share. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Phil and Scott, this is a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed sale of the former National Guard armory property at fourteen twenty-one Park Avenue. A closed bid auction took place on April eleventh, two thousand and twelve, with one bid being received from Come and Go LC of West Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $350,000. Prior to authorizing the sale of the property, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Your Honor, Mayor, move to close comment.
Tom, second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil. Also a voice vote, I'm sorry, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item C. This public hearing concerns the proposed general obligation refunding loan agreement. City council previously took action to approve the four-point-five-million-dollar bond issue to be dated June first, two thousand and twelve. The city's financial consultant completed an analysis of the city's outstanding bond issues to determine if there would be a financial benefits for refunding any of the current debt. Only the two thousand and three bond issue is currently callable, with one payment remaining after the current year's payment. The final payment is due June first, two thousand and thirteen, with a principal amount of $215,000, and interest during the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen fiscal year of $6,450. Staff is proposing city council take action to call the final year of the two thousand and three issue and incorporate this action into the upcoming bond issue. This action would result in a savings of approximately... This action would result in a savings of approximately $4,800 in interest costs to the city. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Jeanette? Also a voice vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five, zero. Item D. This public hearing concerns the proposed development agreement with RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated. This agreement pertains to the development of a commercial movie theater complex and adjacent outlots, which provides for certain financial incentives in the form of property tax payments. The agreement to make the incremental tax, property tax payments will not be a general obligation of the city, but will be payable solely and only from incremental property tax revenues generated within the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. Formal to any, prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Your Honor, just a brief explanation on, on Fridley Theaters. They did request that we postpone action on the agreement tonight. However, bond council did recommend that we, that we do hold the public hearing, but that later on, during city administrator items, that with that item, I believe it's item I, that we adjourn action on approving the agreement to our next meeting, and that we would continue to do that until such time as Fridley Theaters was ready to proceed, or we needed to hold another public hearing should the amount change. And that will allow us to take action in a reasonable amount of time and still provide proper notice.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Still?
Second.
Second, Tom? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five, zero. Item E. This public hearing concerns the proposed Harrison Street construction project. Harrison Street from Park Avenue to Bandag Drive has been identified as a street infrastructure improvement. The proposed roadway would provide a detour during Colorado Street construction scheduled to take place in 2013. The estimated construction costs are approximately $400,000, with additional costs for design, inspection, easement survey, permits, and administration. It is anticipated construction would be completed in 2012. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. No comments by the public? All those in favor signify by aye.
Oops, we need to, we need the motion.
Move to close public comment, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a motion.
Tom?
Tom?
I'll second him.
Second, Scott? Now we'll go for the whole voice vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five, zero. Item E. This public hearing concerns the proposed Cedar Street utility project. This project has been divided into three phases. Phase one is nearing completion. Phase two, which will take place in 2012, will be water, electric, gas, and telephone utility relocations. The final phase, which we, which will be paving, reconstruction, and grading from perimeter to housing, will take place in 2013. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Jeanette? Be a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Scott? Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries five, zero. Skipping to item 11 on the agenda. 11A. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the May 2012 addition to the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. Certain real property situated in the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area was designated as a tax increment district. The city is now interested in increasing the size of the tax increment district by adding additional property that is, that is related to the above-mentioned development project. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Uh, we'll give that one to Bob.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion, council. No discussion, this is a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Bob. Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is the final reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the 2012 addition to the consolidated urban renewal area as it relates to the RL Fridley Theaters development project. Certain real property situated in the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area was designated as a tax increment district. The city is now interested in increasing the size of the tax increment district by adding additional property that is related to the above-mentioned development project. Is there a motion to approve the reading of the ordinance as submitted and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second by Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Phil? Discussion, council.
Do we need to do this?
Yes, we should continue with this. This is the, this is the ordinance that allows us to establish the TIF district.
Okay, and if the, if for some reason that the project doesn't go forth, then we need to, then we would need to back this out, or just leave it for-
You can leave it as is, you know, perhaps there'd be a future development. There, there's, there's nothing that would come forward unless the city enters into a development agreement with the property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
The other discussion, council? It's a roll call vote. We'll begin with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is the final reading of an ordinance amending Title 12 Boards and Commissions, Chapter 19 Board of Water, Electric, and Communications Trustees, Section 5 Trustee Requirements. Muscatine Power and Water has requested that city council amend the ordinance to reflect their service area, which include water and electric, rather than just the city limits, when considering members for its Board of Water, Electric, and Communication Trustees. The proposed ordinance reflects the change, this change, along with the requirement that only one resident reside outside the city limits can be appointed to the board. Is there a motion to approve the final reading of the ordinance as submitted and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott, looking for a second?
Second.
Second, Tom, and discussion, council? No discussion, roll call vote. We'll start with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is the final reading of an ordinance amending Title 1 Administrative, Chapter 6 Mayor and City Council, Section 7 Qualifications of the Mayor and City Council Members. The purpose of this proposed ordinance is to clarify the residency requirements of the mayor and council members. Is there a motion to approve the final reading of the ordinance as submitted and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Phil?
Second.
Second, Tom? Discussion, council? Also a roll call vote, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item E. Resolution approving, I'm sorry, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting the bid opening date for the project identified as rehabilitate airfield pavements at the Muscatine Municipal Airport?
So moved, Your Honor.
Uh, that would be Bob, and we'll give Scott the second. Discussion, council? This is a roll call vote, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item F. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale of the former National Guard Armory, Armory property located at 1421 Park Avenue to Come and Go LC of West Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $350,000?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Scott? And Jeanette, did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, council, discussion? Also a roll call vote, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item G. Is there a motion approving an executed deed between the city of Muscatine and Come and Go LC of West Des Moines, Iowa, for the former National Guard Armory property located at 1421 Park Avenue? A motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Bob, and a second, folks?
Second.
Second, Tom? Council discussion? Roll call vote, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item H. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution taking additional action on the general obligation refunding loan agreements, setting date for sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bond series 2012, authorizing the use of preliminary official statement in connection therewith in authorizing call of outstanding bonds? City council previously took action to approve the port $4.5 million bond issued to be dated June 1st, 2012. The city's financial consultant completed an analysis of the city's outstanding bond issues to determine if there would be financial benefits for refunding any of the current debt. Only the 2003 bond issue is currently callable, with one payment remaining after the current year's payment. The final payment is due June 1st, 2013, with a principal amount of $215,000, and interest during the 2012-2013 fiscal year of $6,450. Staff is proposing city council take action to call the final year of the 2003 issue and incorporate this action into the upcoming bond issue, which would result in increasing the bond issue from $4.5 million to $4,750,000. The increase in the issue will result in a savings of approximately $4,800 in interest costs to the city. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Scott?
Second.
Second. Tom? Council discussion? And a roll call vote. Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay, item I, resolution approving a proposed, proposed development agreement with RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated, and Greg, I'm gonna ask you to explain the events that transpired today. Again, please.
Certainly. Um, based on Fridley's request that we postpone action, based on the bids that came in, they're evaluating those bids at this time, they asked us to postpone action at this time, and in, in doing so, in speaking to our attorney, the recommended motion was to adjourn action on approving the agreement to our next meeting. Now, if, if we're not ready to proceed at that time, you'd simply make that same exact motion again, and that allows us to keep the process moving, still provide adequate notice to the public, and, you know, be able to, I guess, nimbly take action should we need to do that down the road. However, if the amount changes, if they were to come back and say, we'd like to request $3.5 million, we'd have to hold a separate public hearing in order for the council to take action on that different amount.
So, is there a motion to adjourn the action?
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn action on approving the agreement until the next meeting. Second, Your Honor.
So what's the difference between adjourned action and tabling action?
The, the, the legal definite, difference?
Without going too far.
The, the-
It seems to me it's the same.
The attorney told me to do it.
Okay. That's fine. In 20 years, I've never heard that.
So if we can trust our attorney, we're within the guidelines of the law-
Yeah, that's fine.
-in taking this kind of action, correct?
Okay.
Any additional discussion?
That's what he told me before the meeting.
Uh, this would require a roll call vote as well, I'm assuming?
Uh, no, the motion is a simple, a simple majority vote.
To adjourn, okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That motion to adjourn the action carries five, zero. Okay, moving along to item J. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting a bid opening date for the Harrison Street Extension Project?
So moved, Your Honor.
Uh, that would be Phil? Second?
Second.
Second. Scott, council discussion? No discussion, roll call vote. Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item K. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting a bid opening date for the Harrison Street Extension Project?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second.
And Jeanette, second. Council discussion? Roll call vote, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for the Mad Creek Sewer Extension Project. The Clearview Mobile Home Court is under a court order to modify the existing failing lagoon system to meet regulations. The city has proposed extending the Mad Creek Gravity Sewer from Park Avenue West to Clearview. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be Thursday, May 3rd, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Uh, that would be Scott?
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
A second. Bob? Discussion, council? Roll call vote, please, beginning with Scott?
Aye.[1608.26]
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item M, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution awarding the contract for the West Hill Sewer Project Phase One. Five bids were submitted for this project with the low bid from Langman Construction in the amount of $3,688,235.27. Let me read that again, please. Is there a motion to approve the bid as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom, and second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Bob, Council, discussion? Roll call vote, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item N, presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, city staff provides to City Council a request for the assessment of nuisance abatement costs against private property owners. At this time, staff is forwarding the assessment list for unpaid abatement costs totaling $8,704.89. Is there a motion to approve, or is there a motion to adopt, the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second. Scott, Council, discussion? Also a roll call vote, beginning with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item O, resolutions, I'm sorry, presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the tree obstruction project at the Muscatine, at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. In 2005, the building restriction line was moved out as a result of the new instrument landing system, or ILS, for which the city purchased a 26-acre strip of land between Runway 24 and Highway 61 from the Iowa Department of Transportation. There are trees existing on this property that needs to be removed for safety reasons. It is the city's intent to convert the area to agricultural use, or agriculture use, once the trees have been removed. Funding for the project includes $45,540 federal monies with a local match of $5,060. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will take place on Thursday, May 3, 2012 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second. Tom?
Yes.
Any discussion, Council? Also a roll call vote, starting with Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item P, presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution approving the non-union pay plan for fiscal year 2012-2013. This pay plan includes a request for the addition of two positions. The positions are not a request for increased personnel, but rather a reclassification of existing personnel. First is the addition of an accounting supervisor classification to be effective April 23, 2012. Second is an assistant library director position. Both of these positions are proposed to be placed in pay grade seven and will be paid from existing budgeted funds. In addition, the pay plan has been adjusted to reflect the 2.5% increase budgeted by City Council. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil, and a second?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, discussion, Council? So roll call vote, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item Q, presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve the updated drug policy. The changes are based mainly on updated requirements from the Department of Transportation and the Federal Transit Authority, the majority of which are clarifications in language to enhance employees' understanding of the process. It is also, it also adds, adds the, the random testing of police officers, as was agreed to in the most recent union negotiations. Random testing of police officers will be coordinated through the by-state regional commission. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Tom, second by Scott. Discussion, Council? Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those, those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item R, presented for City Council's consideration is a request to authorize the purchase of a mower for the golf course. Six bids were received for this purchase with three of the bids meeting the minimum requirements or specifications. The low bid was from Turf Works of Johnston, Iowa, in the amount of $13,530. There was, there is $15,670 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Phil?
Second.
Second. Tom, discussion, Council?
I, I just have one item, I'd like to have, and I don't need it tonight, I just want a, an email sent to me at least, I'd like to know how the other mowers didn't meet specs. It's just additional information.
We'll send that out to everybody.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, Council? This is a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item S, presented for City Council's consideration is a request from the Police Department to submit a grant application to the Muscatine Health Support Foundation in the amount of $18,500, which is the cost of outfitting all officers with C-50 respirators. The grant would also cover the purchase of a NIOSH-approved CBRN canister filter for each officer, as well as a haversack for carrying and storing the mask. Chief, I should have called on you for those...
OSHA.
Yeah.
It's OSHA, yeah.
Oh, NIA, oh, okay, I got it now. Is there a motion to, to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
And Scott, and a second?
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Bob, any discussion, Council? Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Going past items 12 and 13, it is now time for, for communication from Council members, and we'll begin with Phil.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
Just one thing, Your Honor, I think Earth Day is, is this Saturday, is that correct, Laura? And what, what do citizens need to do if they want to help out? Just show up at the locations?
Okay, Bob?
Mr. City Administrator, I believe we have a citywide Earth Day. Can you give us some details on that for Friday?
We do, Laura has been kind enough to drop off a...
Degree band.
...a band here for you, glow-in-the-dark, I might add, she pointed out to me today. And I, I think the neat thing about our Earth Day celebration is that it's a joint city-county MPW program that Laura and company have coordinated from Friday, April 20th, not the 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM out at Discovery Park, so please join the activities.
Nothing else, Your Honor?
Thanks for asking that question, Bob, I was wondering myself. Jeanette, any comments?
Nothing, thank you.
And Tom?
I have nothing, thank you.
Any other business, Council?
Do we have, is this next week, citywide cleanup?
Yes.
Okay, so the people can start getting their garages cleaned out and their rooms and, and also their lot, if they have any miscellaneous tires, there's only a certain number that they can set out, but there is citywide cleanup. If you want to have any additional information that you'd like to give, I, that could be good.
It's also available on the website.
As I noticed, one of my neighbors had a couch set out that the city didn't pick up and is still there on the curb.
Because it wasn't on the list, Phil, but we'll get it next week for Cleanup Week. Spring Cleanup Week is on next week, April 23 through the 27th, and this is the week where we come through and get all of the couches and the chairs, small amounts of building material, we'll take up to eight car and light truck tires, we'll take up to four appliances, if there's a refrigerator or a deep freezer, an upright, we do ask the door to be removed for safety purposes. We will also take electronics, that includes the televisions, computers, any, any items with circuit boards. And pretty much that covers our listing of what we'll take. And again, it is during next week on your regular garbage day.
Will those selected items be outlined in the Muscatine Journal?
They have, well, they have been marketed in the advertising sections of the journal, so we have had those ads running this week.
Okay, very good, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Council?
We'll adjourn, Your Honor.
There has been a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for coming.
I think we want a table at adjournment.
Did you want to do that, Bob?
No. But that's okay.